Good evening. The November 22nd, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electric devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which Board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Christian, representing the Engage in Education Initiative, I Am Marion, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. It's been an event-filled day, and I'm thrilled to be here with you this evening to share a real-life example of hashtag I Am Marion. John Servalera is a financial advisor with Campus USA Credit Union. He's a 2008 graduate of Forest High School. He met his wife Chelsea here in Ocala when they attended middle school together just across the street at Osceola Middle School. And both of John's parents are graduates of Marion County Public High Schools. They graduated from Vanguard High School. So here is John Servalera.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When I was asked to give today's inspirational, I began thinking about my time with the Marion County Public School System, and it hit me. I would not be standing here today if it wasn't for the school system. And what I mean by that is that my parents actually met one another on their bus rides from the Ocala National Forest to Vanguard and built a relationship and a friendship through that throughout their entire high school career. So whoever was in charge of the zoning back in the 70s that put the forest in Vanguard, I want to thank them. But anyway, my experience throughout my school years has helped shape me into the man that I am today. When I began school at A Street Elementary, I developed several friendships throughout the years that are as strong today as they were then and will continue to be for the rest of my life. During my time at Osceola Middle, as Kevin mentioned, I met my now-wife, Chelsea Walton, and we stayed close friends throughout the years. And once I returned home from college, that's how we got back together, just from our relationship. Forest High School is where I began to understand what was important to me and what I wanted to become in my life. My passion for volunteerism really took hold during those years, and I was involved in several communities and nonprofits. My teachers taught me how to be a diligent student and prepared me for my years to come in college. When I left the College of Central Florida with my AA and moved to Orlando to finish my bachelor's in finance, upon graduation, I had no question on where I was coming next. I was coming to the place I called home and the place that had done so much for me, which is Ocala. I was approached to join the Public Education Foundation, and I knew it was something that I had to do. This was my opportunity to give back to the community and the school system that has done so much for me and made me who I am. I have been to several events for the nonprofit, for the public ed, including Takes Out Graduation, but I never truly grasped how much the foundation did for the community until I was a part as a Board Member. So it's truly an honor to be part of such a wonderful foundation. In closing, I would like to thank the Board for allowing me to give today's inspirational. And I hope if you take anything away from my talk tonight, it's that who I am today and what I have been able to achieve is in large part due to this school system. So I would just like to thank you for everything that you have allowed me to achieve in my life and many other people throughout the county. So thank you.
Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 22nd, 2016 School Board meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting. May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
I have a motion from Ms. McCall and a second from Ms. Boynton. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the Oct.
Everybody's got to vote.
I know that. I'm ahead of myself.
Because you're so smart.
You're right.
Nancy, your votes. There it is. Okay.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 20th, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. James and a second from Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 25th, 2016 School Board Meeting?
So move.
I have a motion from Ms. McCall and a second from Ms. Boynton. And all those in favor signify by stating aye. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 3rd, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor signify by stating aye. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 8th, 2016 School Board Meeting?
So move.
Motion by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. James Jackson, Community Liaison with Social Work Services, would like to recognize the winners of the Red Ribbon School Spirit Award.
Good evening. How are you all this evening? Thank you so very much for allowing me to come in and to discuss about what occurred in our community and in our schools for Red Ribbon Week just a couple weeks ago. Let's start off by saying, this year, we really wanted to bring Red Ribbon to the forefront, and we wanted to make a big public statement against substance abuse in our community. This year, we had 24 schools participate in the School Spirit Contest. That's large, large numbers compared to the previous years. Secondly, and that was not just all the schools that did participate in Red Ribbon Week. We had many more, but they just chose for one reason or another not to participate in the School Spirit Contest. Secondly, our annual kickoff that's held at the Ocala Police Department, and I want to recognize the Ocala Police Department for hosting this event, and they have for so many years, and others, like Mojo's, for example, they did the catering for free for us. There was a lot of different sponsors that helped out with this event to make it so successful. We had approximately 1,000 people at the annual kickoff, and that's almost double what we had last year. So it was amazing. But without further ado, I want to say that we had three wonderful schools who got to the top. We had many more schools that were a really close second, almost first. And the elementary, oh, first let me introduce Nancy Castillo is going to help us present these checks. I'm sorry. My apologies. Nancy, you want to come up? Nope. Church mouse, let me tell you. She's from Casa. If we could, the elementary category goes to Romeo Elementary School. Thank you, Ms. Bayless, for coming up. I appreciate it. Second, middle school category is Osceola Middle School. Ms. Parker, if you'd please come up. And third, our high school category, which was North Marion High School. Ashwood and Ms. Dickens is coming up to accept the check. Again, I'd like to say thank you so very much for these three wonderful schools. We asked them to bring it, and they did. They did a wonderful job in their presentations. They had active student participation. Their campuses were adorned with red ribbons throughout. They made the judges feel very welcome. I just can't say enough about them. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Before you scoot off, before you scoot off, are there any Board members that would like to acknowledge them?
I would like just to thank the school principals and the teachers for all these extra things they do. It's the extra things that will make us excellent. And those who participated and didn't win the trophy, guess what? Bet you will next year if you worked real hard. And so I want to thank everyone for what they do because, gee, if everyone did more than we had to do, this world would be wonderful. And teachers do that every day.
Definitely, definitely.
You know, it's always a pleasure to see kids involved with something. And when I look at the Red Ribbon, that's part of what it's about. But I also noticed that we had some additional North Marion students back there, and they didn't come up front. And I would love for those kids to stand, because I know it was not around the corner. Will the North Marion group please stand? I think we need to acknowledge those kids simply because their trip was not just around the corner. They had a good night.
Yes, sir. It is not.
And again, I want to thank all of you for a job well done. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Jackson. I think you said it best when you said that the principals and the students, you asked them to bring it, and they did. And as a Board Member, thank you. And I can't wait to see what they do next year.
It'll be interesting. It blew my mind this year, so.
I would just like to say thank you. It's such a positive message for our students, and to really have the students behind it and the faculty spreading this positive, positive message, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. Y'all have a wonderful evening, and thank you very much for having us.
Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Homeless Liaison for Social Work Services, would like to recognize Feed the Need for their support of the Homeless Children Program.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Mayer. Yes, I'm here tonight with a wonderful, outstanding group of businesses and partners that have called themselves Feed the Need in Marion County. And under the leadership of Rhonda from Mojo's, most of you know him, and Kathy is with Sunny's and Becky's with Mojo's, they're representing tonight. I know Ms. King and Dr. Mayer attended the Praise Festival a couple of months ago that Feed the Need put on. It was sold out. It was fabulous. And the Homeless Children Program got $8,000 donated to us from that evening. So it was wonderful. But what I want to do tonight is really have them share a little bit about their partnership and also why they chose our Homeless Children Program in Marion County schools.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. It's an honor to be asked to be here. You know, Feed the Need is just something I came up with. There's a huge need in Marion County. Having a hungry child, having a child in need is a big burden that we need to carry. And so what I did was we reached out to other Christian restaurant owners, put God first, and let Him lead the way on everything else. And I'm really good about throwing events, really good about doing fun stuff. So we did a Brick City Blues Festival, did a praise and worship show, and we raised almost $50,000 to impact the youth of Marion County. And we're not done. You know, so we're big proponents of the Food for Kids Backpack Program, big supporters of Suzy, big supporters of Kimberly Centers and their Comfort Program, as well as Kid Central. We're looking to start focusing our group towards the high school kids. They don't get as much love as a lot of the other kids do, and we really want to get them to be able to jumpstart off. So that's going to, Feed the Need is going to start focusing on that quite a bit, too. So we're excited, and just thank you so much for allowing us to be here today and talk about it. Thank you. Yay.
Are there any Board Members?
I would like to say something. Here we go. Our overachievers again. We've got overachieving teachers, we've got overachieving business partners and business people in the community, and we have overachieving employees, Ms. Suzy McGuire. And it's, I just wish I could even begin to shine like y'all shine, because what you do, you know, we know the same. What you do might not change the world, but it sure does for that one child. It changes that child's world. So thank you.
I would love to, Rhonda, you know how I feel about you. Rhonda and I have worked together so often. This man gives so much back to our community. I wish others in his business could really see what he does and really make a difference like you do. Words can never express my appreciation for this program and everything else you do for all the nonprofits in our community. Thank you.
Rhonda, I haven't met you personally, but you've always come up when I'm at a Kid Central Board meeting. And it's one of those things where we look at all the kids, and especially those kids that are in really in dire need and things like that. And Mojo's is one of the things that we talk about, and the tremendous respect we have for what you do. Thank you.
Dr. Mayer.
I would like to echo what Ms. McCall said, and not only do you give, but you give from the heart. It's a mission for you. It's not something that you do for the recognition, although very well-deserved tonight and always. But you give from the heart, and we know that you would give even without the recognition. So that is what says so much about you. So thank you for taking care of our kids. Thank you. And Ms. McGuire, could you just take a minute and share about our homeless children? Because in getting out and speaking to many community groups in the last couple months, not many people knew we had homeless children and the amount of children that we have. So could you speak about that and also the money that was donated, how that's being used?
Absolutely. Well, a homeless child is defined under a federal law that's called the McKinney-Vento Act. And what the federal law has done is has designated to every school system that you have to have a person helping these children. And we have children that live in shelters. We have children that live in motels that honestly, most people would not go and stay. They're not hotels, they're motels. There's a difference. We have the national forests, we have campgrounds, and we have a lot of places that are really just not fit for children to live. And then we also have situations where a friend or a family might take in temporarily children or a family. And we also have a growing population in Marion County that's called our unaccompanied children. So we actually have children going to schools that they don't live with a parent or a legal guardian. So there comes a little bit of education on the school's part and who has to sign for testing and different things like that. I've been doing this job 16 and a half years now, and when I started, we had about 201. We average every year our survey five, about 2,800 or so that are identified enrolled. And as shocking as that number is when I do a presentation, the worst part is that number every single day is inaccurate, because every day, there are families in that situation that we don't know about. And there's also younger siblings that are not yet in our school system that are not counted in those numbers. So what McKinney-Vento does is it helps us keep our children in the school of origin with our busing, removing barriers for free and reduced lunches automatic and things like that. With the money from the donations, what's unique, being part of the school system, is 100% of all the money donated from Feed the Need goes to the kids. There's not a penny or a dollar that's admin. And what that allows us to do is buy new sneakers and socks and backpacks and alarm clocks and, you know, all those things that most people take for granted that they just have, so that our children can show up to school and be successful and be ready to learn. So I couldn't do any of those things without community support and continued donations because our population gets bigger and bigger, unfortunately. We actually had children that ended up here from Hurricane Matthew, families that were displaced. So it's a growing number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I point out that, you know, even though I tend to be the big face of Feed the Need, it's not just me. There's a lot of restaurants, you know, there's Sunny's and Pasta Fair and Empanima and Latinos and Masa. These people don't get half the recognition we do because we're all over the place, but they do care about the community just as much as we do. And I think it'd be remiss just to say that Mojo's is doing it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that I did attend that Feed the Need, and it was a wonderful evening. And I cannot wait to see what you and the other businesses have in store for the future and for our high school students, because it was a fun night and...
August 12th is the next one. And May 13th is the next Blues show, so there's your chance.
There we go. We'll get the word out. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, would like to recognize representatives from the Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors for Grant Awards.
Tonight is the night for money.
Several years ago, it's probably been maybe six or seven years ago, I would get an email
once a year from a lady with the Ocala Marion County Realtors Association. And it basically said, "We have a little bit of money, and we want to give it to teachers who need extra supplies and have great ideas in their classroom but just don't have a way to pay for it." And so that email, like I said, would come usually once a year, and I would forward that to principals, and they would forward that on to their teaching staff. But now, this group has done this so much that they are very adept and very skilled at getting their own message out. This year, they awarded $6,000 in grants to teachers throughout our district. And I want to recognize, I know you do too, those folks who are part of this organization. I'm going to ask them to come up and join us here at the podium. They include Darlene Yauntz, who's the association executive. And joining her this evening are Randy Alford, he's the committee co-chair, Dale Baron, who's the president of the organization, Lena Adamson, a committee member, and also Suzanne Alcorn, who's a committee member. And I'm not sure who is speaking for this group. That's you. Okay. You're right here, man. This is ours. Give us a little idea of what you guys do, why you do this, and why it's so important to you.
Absolutely. This is actually my fourth year, so it's a true privilege to stand here in front of you. Your nodding head, everybody recognizes me by now, right? Every year, a part of the Community Awareness Committee, it's to get our brand out there, and obviously that Realtor brand. We think under everything is the land, which it is. I mean, just this building, everything. So what we've done this year, and you're right, we did cut Kevin out of the picture. We don't directly email him anymore. We email it straight to the principals now. We usually do that right at the beginning of the school year, and they get it out, obviously pass it out to their teachers, anybody that's applying. This year, we were fortunate enough to award 15 of these, what we call mini-grants, all across the county, different schools. And so that's what we are here for to do. So Dale, go ahead and take over.
On behalf of the Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors, I'd like to present this $6,000 check to the following teachers. And please let me get the names right. First one, I'm not going to get right. Francis Korsiglia, Debbie Davenport, is that right? I got it right? Wow. From Ward Highlands, Ward Highlands also, Colleen McGrath. From Bellevue Elementary, Sharni Bryant. Wyomingah, Shelley Kerr. From Shady Hill, Debbie Pace. From Sunrise, Bethann Phallis Clinton. I should get that right. Emerald Chores, Laura Davis. Osceola, Ellen Dick. From Bellevue Middle, Jennifer Thomas. Hillcrest, Tracy Bravo. Hillcrest again, Deborah Scott. Hillcrest again, Sharnetta Wilkum. Vanguard, Robert Bob Burgess, as they say. Rob, sorry. Rob, sorry. From Westport, Norma Barnes. And from Westport, Natasha Murphy. Congratulations.
Okay, now I'm going to tell you what you tell your students. You've got to scoot.
All right, before you guys, before you, you can't leave yet. The Board wants to speak. The Board would like to speak. Mr. James.
Who's the little girl that was holding the check?
Oh, that's my daughter, Haley. You've been here all four years, too.
I just knew who she was, but you overlooked her, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I've been watching her for...
Long time.
A long time. And again, I really appreciate what you do for the school district, and especially getting her involved at this age. And I've seen her for the last four, maybe six years, seven years? Quite a while. And hopefully, we will continually see her come in and really take a part in this activity.
She's our first year working. Loves Mr. Smallridge, so we've got to put a plug in for him.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And thank you for taking the initiative to do this with our students.
No problem. We'll be back again next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I will now ask the board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. King, and congratulations on your new role. Your education experience and sense of humor will serve the board well over the coming year. In full compliance with Florida's Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to school district operations. A written summary of all these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. Mrs. King, we'll call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt of forms by the school board's assistant. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker gets five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and our meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner at all times. Therefore, verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Also, keep in mind that unsolicited commercial solicitations are prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. And finally, to ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of any other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements, Mrs. King. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we do have one speaker tonight, Mr. Chris Abitello.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayor, Board members, Chris Altobello, 2020 Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit in response to the lobbying firm that you contract with, who made a presentation, I believe, at one of your recent work sessions. Several school districts have been offered an opinion by their contract lobbying firm in Tallahassee that K-12 funding statewide could remain flat or even decline during the next three years due to changing funding preferences and priorities. Accordingly, they are advising districts to employ cost-saving moves and long-term planning. Much of this advice comes as a result of the state's economic report, which anticipates modest revenue growth, which is chasing growth, growing needs, particularly in healthcare, and legislative leaders expressing a desire to fund other projects or ideas. As for the modest review projections that your lobbyist recently stated, the state economists met in August and they have just updated their revenue picture this month, November 1st. Even with some revisions, the state budget is projecting a remaining balance of 1.4 billion surplus. I'd like to share with you just a couple of items for your consideration. Florida has shown real growth of 3.1%, moving the state above the national average for the third year in a row. Florida's personal income is also above the national average of 4.4%, showing growth of 5.2% and ranking the state sixth. Unemployment is down. The wage gap has stopped declining. Population growth strengthening, which may mean more students coming into our districts. And I believe we are seeing that this year. And housing is improving. The report says the economy is solid and taxable sales, which is a major component of general revenue, remains positive over prior years. General revenue projections show steady growth. And it's expected to pick up slightly all the way through the 2019-2020 time period and then settle along, a long-term 3.5% growth. Now, you can find this, and I'd be happy to email it to you, in the Florida Economic Overview, which I'm sure you probably received from your lobbyist. So, as for the advice that you received from your lobbyist, I appreciate some of their words. For example, districts should always be looking for cost-saving and planning measures for the future. I want you to do that. And the savings and the planning should result in funding our classroom students and personnel first. Our school district leaders should not accept the notion that some other issue be funded before them. And the district prediction should not be self-fulfilling. So, basically, what I'm asking you to do is that instead of espousing doom and gloom that we heard a few weeks ago, you should continue to make a case to Tallahassee that critical student needs, infrastructure, and district operational needs must be met before other issues are funded. Excessive reserves don't serve students and teachers. The money is appropriated to be expended, not hoarded. So, I hope this will be the first of a few discussions that the associations, both MEA and MESP, which I represent, will share with you as you do your budgetary planning. But according to the economists, the state is on the move upward. So, I'm hoping that you will continue your advocacy, like you have already done in some of your legislative programming, to go up to Tallahassee this session and advocate for not only the students that we serve, but those that are charged with serving them. Thank you.
Any discussion from the board? Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve naming of the Lake Weir High School baseball field, Ed McPadden Ball Field? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, motioned, Mr. James, and seconded by Ms. Boynton.
The naming of the baseball field at Lake Weir High School will honor the achievements of Mr. Edward McPadden, who has been associated with the development of the Lake Weir High School baseball program and has coached for a total of thirty-two years at three different high schools within the state of Florida. He was also inducted into the Florida Athletic Coaches Association Hall of Fame in January 2013.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the naming of the baseball field at Lake Weir High School?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
David Ellers.
Good evening. My name's David Ellers, I'm the principal at Bellevue Middle School. I'm a resident of Marion County Public Schools, 10424 Southeast, 174th Place, Summerfield. I didn't plan to do this today. I was here because my teacher was getting a Realtor Award. Ed McPadden is possibly one of the greatest employees we've ever had in Marion County. As Mrs. Stacy, I don't know if your kids ever had a run-in with Mr. McPadden at some point, but she was stating those people that go above and beyond and make our district a great place. Coaches hit such a sweet spot in our district, encouraging kids, changing people's lives. And there is nobody that's done it in this district any better than Ed McPadden. I worked with him for ten years, both at Vanguard High School, and saw what he did. And not only was he a great baseball coach, but a great educator. As far as I'm concerned, you could name the school after him. And I think it wouldn't be enough of an honor. And the thing I will tell you about Ed is he would never have thought to do that for this honor at all. He would do it because it was the right thing to do for kids. Anything he ever did was about kids and about his players, his students. And he's just, I can't say enough about Ed. But I'll be quiet now.
Okay, is there any other discussion from the board members?
I really don't have a discussion on it. It's simple that Ed McPadden is probably one of the, he's up there with the Brett Halls and all the rest of the people that made a significant contribution to this community. And when I think in terms of him, I know that at one point, we were looking for a county athletic director. And he became our first county athletic director. And in reference to his commitment to the people of this county is unbelievable. So, when we think in terms of him, I think we need to have a field out there named after him. It's something that is just unquestionable to think of anything different.
Mrs. Stacy?
Yes, and that's a name off through sports with my kids, going all the way through all the sports programs in the school system. Everyone knew him and how great he was. But I would also like to compliment one of our school board members, Mrs. Boynton. It was the work of Mrs. Boynton where she convinced this board to move to a different process, where we were able to honor people, name things. And I'll tell you the truth, I really wasn't real for it at first because I felt like we'd leave people out. Somebody would get their feelings hurt. Somebody's grandfather was a great person in the same area and didn't get something named after him. But I was wrong. I want to thank Mrs. Boynton for driving this like a freight train. She was on it. And it's, and I've enjoyed seeing things come before us named for people who, because we have not abused it at all. We've really, I just figured we're going to have everything named after somebody's dog next here, you know? I was, I was just not for it. But it's not worked out like that. The people, the community, the school system has respected the fact that that is a very special thing to name something in the Marion County school system after someone. So, thank you, Mrs. Boynton, for driving that train for us. I appreciate it.
I agree with you saying too. Thank you, the changes have really changed.
It's been fun. It's really been fun.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, well, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt the 2014 through 2017 Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McCall and a second from Mr. James.
The revised document is in compliance with the Florida Department of Education requirements and provides the basis for evaluation, identification, eligibility, determination, and placement of students in special programs for exceptional students.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document?
No speakers.
No speakers. And one up here. Okay, good. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, C-10.1, C-20.1, as submitted? May I have a motion and a second?
A second.
Okay. Ms. Boynton motioned and Ms. McCall second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by stating aye. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following appointments with an effective date of November 23rd, 2016? First, Dr. Jonathan Grantham as Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. Two, Dr. Robert Craig Hamm as Deputy Superintendent of Operations. And third, Mrs. Elizabeth Fields as Director of ESC, Exceptional Student Education. May I have a motion and a second? Motion by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion, discussion from the board? Okay, Dr. Mayer did ask if, let's vote first and then we'll have them. That's what I think we'll do. All those in favor signify by stating aye. And the motion passed 5-0. Dr. Mayer asked if they could just come up and do a quick introduction of theirselves real quick, if that's okay. So, let's begin with Dr. Grantham.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Staff. I'm excited, today's been a great day for me to come and just feel the energy in this school system. I am from Tampa, or not from Tampa, I'm currently working in Tampa. I'm from Calhoun County, which is a small rural county in the Panhandle. I'm very excited to be here. I would love to say that everybody I've met today has just been very hospitable and very kind and very excited to get some things going. I do appreciate all of you very much. My children are coming soon, I hope, sooner rather than later, I'm missing them already. It's been a long day, but a very exciting day, and I'm just honored and humbled to be here. So, I thank you all for everything.
Thank you. Dr. Hamm?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, assembled guests and staff. It would take a very special event to get me to come out of retirement, having done it three times now. And when Dr. Mayer gave me the opportunity to continue to serve my community in this capacity, I did consult with higher authority at home and was graciously given permission to finish the honey-do list and come back to work. Those of you who know me in other capacities, some of you know about my military background, some of you know about my involvement with the E-MET program or representing teachers and support staff in Marion County. In all of my careers, I have sought to serve others. And I strongly believe in servant leadership and see this as a great opportunity to continue that. And I thank you for having the confidence in me to approve it this evening. Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Fields is teaching tonight? She's an adjunct instructor at College of Central Florida, the Teacher Preparation Program. She teaches one of the ESC assessment courses, so I'd like her to say hello at a later date. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to recognize Superintendent Mayor.
I request that the Chair declare good cause to discuss an emergency item regarding the transfer of two personnel.
I declare a good cause.
Thank you. The transfer of two personnel is being requested as an emergency item due to the time constraints between taking oath of office earlier today and the ensuing board meeting this evening. These individuals are key personnel needed as part of the transition team. I recommend a motion be made to approve two transfers as follows. Kristen Lyon, Chris Lyon, to Director, K-12 Academic Services from Instructional, and Woodrow Clymer, to Principal on Assignment from Grant Coordinator.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Stacy and seconded by Ms. Boynton? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is, are these two positions in the current staffing plan and are they budgeted for?
Yes. This is with the shifting of others. And we met today, and Ms. Boston Ellis is here if you have specific budget questions, but yes.
Those are my questions, as long as they're in the staffing plan and they are in the budget.
Okay, now, why is this an emergency?
Because of the time constraint between today and the meeting. Because of the timing of the signing.
It's an emergency because it's, it was, because of the timing of the signing.
Of the PSNs.
And it have nothing to do with an emergency in reference to the performance of their duty?
I would say that could be said as correct, but in order to get them going and to get the boots-on-the-ground assistance to our schools, that is why it's on the agenda for this evening.
And the boots on the ground mean that we have to do this tomorrow. There's nothing where we can sit down... They, there, there's nothing where we can, uh, sit down and actually look at what they're doing or anything like that. It's just something that they, you feel that, that it's an emergency and it's something that gonna change something tomorrow that's occurring in a school.
Well, there is no school tomorrow, but to have them, um, ready to go on Monday, yes. There is very little time between now and the time we have our assessment in the spring and to get assistance to our schools that are struggling, that's why I'm making this request.
Could you just tell us a little bit about what they will be doing?
Yes. Chris Lyon will be coming to us and she will be in K twelve Academic Services. She will be, um, not only a professional development contact, but a data guru. When she was with us in the accounting office before, that was her forte. She knows data back and forth. So, she will be assisting in that capacity as well as in professional development. Mr. Clymer will be Principal on Assignment, and again, will be boots on the ground. As we rethink the idea of what, um, school development and evaluation will look like, that department, those people will be out in the schools giving primary, um, assistance to our low-performing schools. Will be assisting them and will be giving technical assistance immediately. They'll be the liaison between the Superintendent and the schools.
Okay, when I, I hear this now, our strategic plan that we have in place. Okay, how, how, how are they tied into our strategic plan at this point? Have we changed it or anything like that?
When we look at the strategic plan, we can sum up our strategic plan in one word, and that would be student, the student, and what is best for the student. As I say again, we have very little time between now and the assessment that is coming very quickly in the spring. And if we want our students to succeed, if we want to provide assistance to these four low-performing schools, we need to get them strategic, planful assistance immediately.
I would like to say that since I became a school board member, I have heard tomorrow or mañana until I'm ready to scream. The time is now, the time is today, to start moving forward. We have a new administration. We cannot expect the administration to continue, um, on the same path that it's been. And I appreciate Dr. Mayer, um, for moving us out of the box that we've been trapped in. This district has declined thirteen district rankings in the first two years of my first four-year term. I it's, it's the most incredible thing that I, I, I felt like this place had gone insane. I'd never seen anything like it. And neither had the other people in the state, because across the state, we had the most decline of any other district out of sixty-seven. It is time to stop throwing up roadblocks to put students first. It is time to move forward with people that our superintendent has confidence in, that she can get the job done, or why do we have a superintendent? So, um, I support her appointments. There's no reason for me to support, like, Woody Clymer was my opponent once. I highly respect him. It's not like I am on board for something that is, like, just to be on the bandwagon. He's a great educator. He was my opponent, and I am one hundred percent for him being in this position because I know him personally, and I know that he is a disciplinarian, and I believe that he has a lot to add. I see a wonderful principal sitting in front of me from, um, our Magnet School, that was ranked the number one magnet, the number one, one of the number one schools in the state. And Mr. Raymond's coming on board to help, Mr. Clymer's coming on board to help. It's time that we go for excellence. And if he can help us bring our schools around like he, what he did at the Magnet School for us, then hey, let's get started tonight. Okay?
Mrs. Stacy, I wasn't questioning her judgment. I was questioning, I don't have enough information here on what are these positions going to do? Uh, that was my question. I would like more information, I'm not, I will vote for it tonight, but when we have positions that come before us, this doesn't tell me a whole lot. And if, I would really like to see a little bit more on what it is that they are going to do.
Understood. I would like that opportunity at a next board meeting to address that, we'll have them talk to you.
Okay. This is what, uh, again, this is one of the thing, I've been knowing all these people for a long time and have the utmost respect for them. This have nothing to do with them personally. I'm questioning, is, is it an emergency in the sense that, just like Ms. McCall had pointed out, what are they doing? And this is why I, I say let's table this and bring it back when you have a chance to explain what they're doing. I have no problem with, with Woody or anybody, to be honest with you. But when I see it an emergency, uh, and that's what it's about to me, is making sure we don't run downhill. And when I say run downhill, I know what you're trying to do, and I've told you that. And this have nothing to do with any of the people that's here. And when I hear things like that, I, I'm saying, wait a minute, that's not what this was about to me. I would like to, uh, present a motion that we table it and let you bring it back to us at the next work session, because I don't consider this as an emergency.
Okay, Ms. Boynton, did you have a comment?
Well, I can, I can understand, um, why we have the, uh, Mr. James just talk, this act, talking to us. And I understand that the Dr. Mayer, um, the because this, uh, this, you're asking for us to change it like it's an emergency. And, and it is not really an emergency for us and for a, it's not, uh, for our, um, what I think is, and as I listen to, uh, what Mrs., um, she was saying, yeah, was saying it with Mr. James, and all, and, and I listened to it, I was really, but, you know, yes, I wanted to, 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 to do this so, so love, but I have two, two other board, board members who really need some time to look this, a little bit more for them to listen to, to understand why you would want to have, have this, this, this done instantly. And maybe we can bring it to our, our next, um, another meeting and talk, talk this over, straight to you, and then instantly bring it within, not that we're saying we don't want this, because I, like I do, I know the names, I know Ky- Ky- Kyler and all of them. This is something that, I understand what you, what you're really asking for, but I also understand that, uh, we have a, a new board right here who were really a time to reach this a little bit more for herself, so she would understand what are we gonna do, what is, what are they gonna do so differently? And I think if, if you could bring it back to the board and say, yes, this is what we'll be able to do, then I think you would, you would, you would be something of, something much quicker for you to get it back, you know? So, I'm going to, uh, ask with Mr., Mr. James, I ask that we just stay this down, hold it down? So, because we do have another board who needs, I really think we should to say, look at her and say, yes, she needs to under the little
Ms. Boynton, I'm, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote for this because, uh, I don't want to, again, uh, question her judgment. But in the future, we need more information. I, I don't think this is an emergency. We need more information about these positions.
Okay. And ju- just let me just share this with you, more than anything else, and it'll come up in my comments and things. When we make decisions like this, guys, I know that there's, there's more to it than, than we have an emergency and we're working in this area, but it also affect how much, where our funds are and where our, uh, where it's coming from and how it will be, uh, spending, uh, the money will really come from, where it will be spending, we're spending it from, and things that are, are, are of that nature. When I get an emergency like this, this having given me an opportunity to say, well, it's coming from this, this is what we're using it for. Okay, when I say it's an emergency, and I'm not saying this, you can table it and bring it back and, and I'll have a chance to talk with Teresa and some of these people and make sure we're not going down some, uh, street that we really don't need to go to. I understand, uh, the board wanting to say, let's move full fe- uh, full, uh, force straight ahead. But this, to me, this ain't changing too much here. And when I say an emergency, I'm thinking it's something that we have to have right now. But this is nothing, nothing, another week or the two weeks will change. And that's my whole point. I'm not gonna vote for it simply because I don't want to set that precedent of bringing it before us and it's an emergency, but it's really not. When you really look at it, it's really not. Okay, and that's where I am.
Okay, Ms. Stacy.
I would like to say I really don't see how we can afford not to do this because every day that we spend on the old track is good money that we're spending that we're not getting results from. I've watched the results. The, the faster we can change course, the train is now on a dirt path. The faster we can change the direction of where we're going, we will be spending money and getting something for it because a child has one opportunity in education. Only one. And we are sitting here, the five of us, are the people in this community that will give them that opportunity. And like I said, it might not mean a lot to some of us, but it means a lot to that child and that child's parents. Because there are parents in this community that have called me, they've had problems, there's teachers that have called me, that, there's been issues. It is time to start spending money and getting results. And then, just for two more weeks to continue spending money and staying on the same path, trains in the dirt path, not on the track, and let's get that train back on the track tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as a point of order, we have a motion on the floor to table, so we need to determine if there's a second on that? And if there's not, it fails, and then we go back to the original motion?
Okay. All right, so there's the motion.
Yeah, that, I made the motion to table it until we had enough time.
And is there, is there a second?
Is there, yeah, is there a second?
I had said, but no, because I was gonna come back and say, if you, if you give me a se- second to say that, um, I understand what Mr. Stacy quite, like my heart is, we really do to, to ch- to change instantly. My thought was, I looked at, we have a new board, and I understand we have another board who wanted to talk this a little bit more, you know? But if we have, if our board, new board is ready, then I, I'm, 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 I'm ready to.
Okay, so there is not a second. All right.
Motion to table, fails.
Okay, so, um, all those in favor of the emergency item to transfer these two personnel signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passed four one. May I have a motion to approve the cash or tangible donations in the amount or value of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, the motion is moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Okay. All right, so we have one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety cents to Dr. N. H. Jones Elementary School from the University of Florida, two thousand six hundred and forty dollars to Dr. N. H. Jones Elementary School from Ramuson College, one thousand to Evergreen Elementary School from their business partner, Kiwanis Club of Ocala via the Public Education Foundation. Gift card valued at two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents to Hill Crest Public School from Rack Room Shoes, two thousand dollars to Liberty Middle School from Voya Financial, one thousand to North Marion Middle School from Howard Glit, twenty-five hundred to Vanguard High School from the Ocala Orthopedic Group, P.A., twenty-five hundred to Vanguard High School from Toby Young Contracting, three thousand to Westport High School from the Village Angels Autism Support, twenty-five hundred to Westport High School from their business partner, Monroe Regional Medical Center via the Public Education Foundation, one thousand to Westport High School from the Kinder Vision Foundation Incorporated, five thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars, ten cents to Wyamina Park Elementary School from the Central Christian Church. Grants for Great Ideas were awarded by the Public Education Foundation as follows. Five thousand to Bellevue Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for the Grants for Great Ideas Project, Bring on the Sunshine, twenty-seven hundred to Greenway Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for Grand Ideas Project Fame, Families Actively and Meaningfully Engaged. Five thousand to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Public Education Foundation of Marion County for Grants for Great Ideas Project, Students Become Teachers Through Technology. Four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents to Osceola Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for Grants for Great Ideas Project, Making Our Maker Space. Three thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, seventy-one cent to Vanguard High School from the Public Education Foundation for the Grant for Ideas Project, Art and Science Chromatography Project. Four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, ninety cents to Westport High from the Public Education Foundation for Grants for Great Ideas Project, Learning to Love Literacy. May I have a motion in a second? We did, from, okay. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the motion passed five to zero. Mr. James, would you like to thank our donation, donation?
You know, uh, that's one of the things we will miss about, from Mrs. Eli, because she, she would, uh, add up all the contributions and give us one lump sum, so we have to really look, thank her for that. But again, we want to thank the people that have really contributed to our school system in the form of donations and things of this nature. Because as you looked at our program tonight, there were so many people that are giving to our, our program, and it make us worthwhile, everybody's concern. So, again, thank to the donor, uh, to the people that have donated to us. Thank you.
The next admin- administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, December eighth, twenty sixteen at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to finalize the twenty seventeen eighteen instructional calendar and review costs for alternative programs currently in place, as well as review our legislative agenda and determine representatives to speak at the Marion County Delegation Meeting to be held on January nineteenth. Okay, do we have any quest, or any concerns or discussion for today? And, um, Ms. Stacy, we'll begin with you today.
I just would like to say, isn't it a beautiful evening? I want to thank Ms. McCall for her input tonight and, um, and wanting to be informed as to what, you know, what, what we're signing on to. I agree, Ms. McCall, that that's very important. Um, and I would ordinarily be right along with you on this, except I'm ready to go. And that's the only reason, because you and I really see eye to eye on that, that the board needs to know, because we don't need to be perceived as a rubber stamp by anyone. And I've known Mrs. McCall for vi- for many, many years. And, um, that's the reason today I nominated her as Vice Chair, because she has tremendous experience serving on boards, foundations, and things. And I look forward to learning things from her because I have not served in those, in those areas. I've been a businesswoman my entire adult career. And, um, so I would like to compliment her and thank her for showing us where she's gonna be as a school board member, that she will be asking questions. And I think we're gonna be in the same boat, and I think I'm gonna enjoy serving with her. And, um, and I, I enjoyed the conversation with everyone, and thank you, Dr. Mayer, for a great meeting. And Mrs. King, thank you. I've thoroughly enjoyed the evening, and I look forward to getting the train back on the track. Thank you.
Mr. James?
You know, sitting here and looking out there and seeing so many of the people that I'm so acquainted with, and I know the work that you have done. And when I say this to you- And when I say this to you, even to Oceanliner, have an anchor to help guide it through. So my remarks is more about helping us guide this ocean liner. Some questions, some things that I feel that we need to do, and we need to look at, when do we review our staffing plan? Again, when is that scheduled? Because we're moving so fast. And people seem to think that I'm over here trying to deny them the right to change, but I'm trying to look at the big picture here. When do we have it scheduled for us to review the staffing plan?
February first.
Okay, February first is when the earliest that we can review the staffing plan. Now, these are what my concerns are. I've seen two of my favorite principals, oh, three of them, back on staff. And to me, that money is coming from somewhere. And so I am concerned about the fact that we have spent an X amount of dollars, and we have not truly looked at our staffing plan. When I had an emergency item and say, slow down, guys, let's look at what we're doing, it was, it became a personnel, like, I don't like this person. When I look at the school district and I look at the fact that we are spending quite a bit of money here, and I have, I have not seen a report of actually how much all of these moves will cost. You know, we're making some moves, and I understand that. And I'm looking back at Teresa, because she's the person that usually will give us an update and let us know where we are in reference to this. Because we have a whole school year to get through. We have to get to that point where we look at our funding. And we have put in a lot of people, and I have not looked at the staffing plan. I've not had an opportunity to look at the strategic plan that we were set in motion at the beginning of the school year. But in the middle of it, we're changing it, and we're adding all of this. And folk, I know, we're excited, and we had a great day. Don't get me wrong, we had a great day. But somewhere along the line, somebody's gotta be sitting here and say, whoa, let's look at the, let's look at the big picture here. And this is what my concerns is. When will we readdress the strategic plan that we have in place? Because we already, we have, we already thrown it out and say, we're going in this direction? Well, tell us about it, if it is. Because we are adding something to it, and if we're going in this direction. There's old analogies about who's on first and all of that stuff. I'd like to know who's on first, what they're doing, and where they're going. I see some great people out there, but I have no idea of what they're doing. It's important for us to understand, I am talking about the big picture, not one incident, because one incident will affect what we do. And this is why I want us to be very cautious about it. When you're running downhill, folk, you don't just go and just run. You take your time and you work your way through it. And I see some great people out there, and I'm so proud to see them in the house again. But by the same token, I am one of these people that know from the years of experience that at the end of the year, I don't wanna hear about us having to stop spending because we are, we're getting to that point. I've heard things from our lobby, about our lobbyists in Tallahassee. And those people have done a good job for us. And this is why the board, when we have reports from one side and the other side, we need to have an opportunity to really reflect on this information. And if we don't reflect on it, I guarantee you, we will be cutting down purchase orders at the end of the year. And I think the principals that are coming back know that this is some of the things we had to do to make it, to make it to balance at the end. Some things that are very important to me. I had an opportunity to go out to Dunellen Middle School, and they had around sixty-five people out there working for Meadowbrook School in terms of helping and just doing various things. I was over at N. H. Jones, and they've told me they had a hundred over there in terms of people from their church doing all, a lot of neat things and working with the school system. We know, and I know, that those people did it out of the kindness of their heart, and they are part of the school system. I will tell the board again, when we look at what we're doing and we're trying to change things, let's look at the big picture, because we have a lot of people that depend on us. By the same token, I do know this. We, as a board, need a staffing plan. We need to review our strategic plan, and we need to know who's on first and who's on second and where they're going. That's my thought for the day.
Ms. Boynton?
Well, first, I just wanted to have you have a Thanksgiving safe time. And I also wanted you all to think about, to remember in November the twenty-ninth to December the second, the F.S.V.A., our Seventh First Annual Joint Conference, Conver- Conference will be there. And I'm so proud to know that Marion County, we will have Mr. Mark Villanella. Thank you, thank you very much. Will be coming, and we will, they will be having a in-ground sessions that's ensuring every child will succeed. And so for Marion County, for the state, they have brought in Mr. Villanella. Villanella, come out. Can you, you wanna, can you come out and tell them a little bit about that, Mr.? What are you gonna be doing? Yes, please, it's very important for, I think.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Chair, School Board. I was asked, Mrs. Boynton reached out to the School Board Association and wanted to, I think, highlight our PASS program. So we'll have an opportunity to come, and I think there's gonna be three twenty-minute sessions where school board members throughout the state will have an opportunity, if they would like to learn more about what we're doing to our alternative to out-of-school suspension, which is our PASS program. It began back in ten thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. And we've slowly, over time, have opened up additional sites throughout our county. So in addition to our in-school suspension rooms that we have, when a student qualifies for out-of-school suspension, then our schools have the opportunity to send a student to our PASS program, which is really a win-win all across the board. So the school has an opportunity to remove a disruptive student from their campus. The parent has a place where the student can go while they're at work, while they've qualified for suspension. They've got a place for the student, their child, to go. The student is allowed to make up their work at a hundred percent credit. And law enforcement likes it, of course, too, because it keeps students from being unsupervised on the street. So we put together a wealth of information, kind of a historical look of how we've evolved our PASS program. And we'll have some information on how, if another district would like to replicate, duplicate what we're doing here in Marion County, I'll be able to share with them how they could go about getting started.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to bring out was that the, the actor called, called me, and would I be for that, for the information? And I said, no, but it's not for me to bring it out anyway. And I said, she said, she said, oh, really? But we're gonna get Mark out anyway? And I said, please, we could get to them for the state to be able to know what we're doing for our PASS class program here. It's a wonderful thing. So I wanted to thank you for coming in to do this for us. And thank you, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Thank you. I look so forward to serving on this board and serving our children. I will question things. I will always want information prior to making a vote, so please just be aware of that. Dr. Mayer, I had a wonderful experience at Stanton Weir's Del Elementary last week, where I actually went to their SAC meeting and truly enjoyed that. They're doing some really good things with their kids out there, including having a student perform, the students actually attend their own conferences and help with their plan. Once they look at, they look at their data, and they tell what they're good at and what they need help in. And they, with the teacher and their parent, help decide how they're going to get there. And attendance is up because of that, so I was very pleased with that. I look forward to visiting SAC and faculty meetings of all of my schools in my district. Monday morning, I had the pleasure, and Kevin, you're gonna have to help me with the young lady's name, to attend Dunellen High School, where Take Stock in Children once again has a finalist in the Leaders for Life Program. The young lady is a fabulous young student who wants to go into journalism. And her name, Kevin? Thank you.
She is a senior. Her name is Hannah Warren.
Thank you, Hannah Warren. If she is one of the top six, they call them fellows, then she has a full ride to any college that she wants to go to. This is the third year our Public Education Foundation Take Stock in Children program has had Leaders for Life, and we need to be very, very proud of that. These are out of hundreds of children throughout the state in the Take Stock program, and they choose fourteen. And for the third year in a row, we have one of those. So we need to be very proud of that. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
I just wanna take a moment to recognize Ms. McGuire, since I have her, and Mr. Christian. Couple of weeks ago, we attended the Veterans Day program, and it was spectacular, as always. These students, I believe we had two thousand students? I can't recall.
We had thirty-six schools represented, and we brought in forty-nine school buses for the event. So we know we had over about twenty-two hundred students just on buses alone.
Certainly the largest amount of students we've ever had in the ten years that the district has put on that event.
It was. I noticed it grew since last year. But what a wonderful event, because our students are giving back to our community. And they gave through their speeches and their songs. And the teachers, when they would come up, and the music teachers, and, you know, instruct them, and you could just tell how involved. And just, it was such a well-organized event. And I just saw you guys there together, and I just wanted to take a quick moment and tell you thank you. And I look forward to what you guys are gonna do next year. It's gonna be up.
We're already planning. I have no ideas yet.
It literally starts a year in advance. I might share, if you would indulge me for just a moment, my colleague at Marion County Fire Rescue, my counterpart there, is a twenty-two-year military veteran. I didn't know this until after the fact. But he shared with me via text that he was moved to tears that day at the involvement of students who went out of their way to appreciate him that day. So I have to believe that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of more stories just like that one.
And Marion County absolutely is the example of that, because talking to the congressman and several other people in attendance, they're like, the kids are off today, and you bring them? No, we're in school today. Kevin covers it in part of, you know, the overview of the program. And just having the awareness and the education for our children and through the veterans in the classroom program is just so unique in Marion County. And, I mean, Kevin and I have been working together twenty years in different fields, but we just love doing this together, and we do start about a year out talking about it. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Wonderful, and as you said, a teachable moment. Our students learned that day about the significance of that day and our veterans. And I'm not sure anything can pop it, but I'm looking forward to it.
I will, I will just say, I was, I was so in awe that I had four World War II veterans up under the pavilion that we got to talk to. And that's just so special, that they came and they liked the program and they thanked us. And that was worth it.
There aren't many of those left.
Absolutely, so, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Stacy has a question.
While you're up there, one reason possibly that other districts don't have a program like this is because they don't have a Kevin and a Susie. It's the people that really, really make the difference. And the person that hired you two along the way, we owe them gratitude.
Mr. Horford is long retired, wherever he might be.
Well, we owe, you know, we owe them thanks, because there is absolutely no way, either of you, because you do Christmas parades and all kinds of stuff, there's no way either one of you can do that in forty hours. You are definitely on the cellphones, in contact with one another, weekends nights, early in the morning. And again, we have our overachievers. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy, you mentioned the Christmas parade, and that just reminds me, Ms. Dr. Mayer, sorry, I named your doctor. Dr. Mayer graciously asked us if we would write on the float with Dr. Grantham and Dr. Hamm. She will need to know by tomorrow, so if you just wanna maybe let Paula know at some point, if you're interested in doing that. And also, I would like to welcome Ms. McCall on board. I loved seeing your family this morning.
Thank you.
They were precious. They were just standing there, and your grandson even administered her oath. And it was just, it was special, very sweet. So, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And great first day. And, Dr. Mayer, I had a moment to watch your message that you gave to the teachers this morning. And in it, you stated that one of your favorite books is The Giver. And you quoted that it's not the choosing that's, that, I mean, excuse me, it is. It's the choosing that's important, isn't it? And it is. And I wanna thank you for choosing Marion County students and Marion County community and teachers and staff. And I just wanna say thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I just would like to wish everyone a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving. And that's what I have to conclude with. Mr. Lake, do you have anything?
Oh, I just echo what you said. I think it's been a wonderful day. It's exciting, from my perspective, to see a new board and a new superintendent get together and take shape. And I'll do everything I can to help it succeed over the next year. So best of luck to all of us.
Ms. McCall and Dr. Mayer?
Thank you, Mrs. King. And thank you, Board. And a great first board meeting. Thank you all. And I look forward to many more discussions and many more discussions that we will have prior to meetings, as we've already have. I believe in transparent communication, and I look forward to that. And I appreciate the dialogue, always, always. And as we move forward, we will continue our effort to use current resources instead of creating new obligations. We can do it. And in having great discussions today and in the two months leading up to this evening, as I've shared with all of you previous to this evening, you know that every decision that has been made so far has been very planful, very well thought out, and has involved a team effort. It wasn't just a unilateral decision. So again, thank you for the dialogue, and I cannot wait for more of it to continue. You mentioned The Giver is one of my favorite books. And you all know that I am an avid reader, and one of my goals is to just inspire the love of reading with not only our students, but even all of you. There are some adults that I run into that say, oh, I don't like reading. Well, my response is, well, then you haven't found a book yet that has touched your heart. And so I truly believe that books are one of the most wonderful things, and reading is such a joy, and that it should touch your heart. So I wanted to share a couple of books with you and with parents out there, because you know, parents, that just reading fifteen minutes a night to your child will make all the difference. No matter what age your student is, I read to my son Jack through middle school. We would still read aloud at night. And so a few books in the spirit of national events, current events with our elections. One is called Capital. It is an alphabet book about the election process and about Washington, D.C. So even from younger students through even high school, you can approach this book in different ways. And it addresses from A to Z interesting, exciting things with the election process and with the Capitol, with Washington, D.C. For those reading middle school, high school, and adults, this is a great book. It's called The President's Club. And it goes back to the Hoover administration through present day. And it details the relationships that exiting presidents have with current presidents and the unlikely friendships and mentorships that are made. It's fascinating to know that, for instance, how the relationship between Bill Clinton and the Bushes happened, and how the Bushes kind of adopted Bill Clinton as an extra son. And it just goes into the detail of that. And it's just interesting to see what exiting presidents, the influence and the partnerships that are made with current ones. So I would highly recommend that. And again, to echo previous comments, I wish you all just a joyous Thanksgiving. It's a wonderful, wonderful day in Marion County public schools.
Thank you. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November fourth, 2016. Ms. Flotketter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to... May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students J.D. seventeen, seventeen, J.D. seventeen eighteen, and J.D. seventeen nineteen with educational services through the first semester of the 2017-2018 school year? May I have a motion in a second?
So move.
I have a motion from Ms. McCall, and a second from Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Boynton, and second, Mr. James. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. The meeting is adjourned at seventy-one.